And good evening, welcome. This is the first in a series of candidate forums that the Rock County Civic Academy is holding involving the candidates for Janesville School Board of Trustees. Previously, we have hosted forums that involve the Janesville City Council candidates, and the schedule gets a little bit complicated going forward. I congratulate this group of candidates because not only are they're here tonight for this forum, but they're doing a return performance in another group tomorrow morning at 7:00 a.m. So we'll get you out of here at a reasonable hour so that you can get a little rest before you get through the next step tomorrow. So with that, I think we're ready to begin. And what I'd like to do is open it up with a first question that's really quite straightforward. I want you to take a moment to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about who you are and why you're running for Janesville School Board. And Michelle Hayworth will start with you.
Thank you. I'm Michelle Hayworth. I am running for my fourth term on the school board. I have served as a commissioner, clerk, as well as president on the board in my tenure here. I am a mom of three kids. Two of them have graduated from JSD and are now in college, and then I have an eighth grader at Marshall. I'm running for the school board again because I have really appreciated the experience that I've gotten to have, kind of getting behind the scenes to influence and participate and engage in the direction of the district that my kids are being raised in, if I'm being honest. And I feel like I can contribute. I have a business background. I'm a director of operations in Stoughton, and so I bring a business background where I can contribute to helping us make sound fiscal decisions and guide policy.
Thank you, Michelle. For the record, we had invited Michelle Herford. She indicated she would be here, but we have not seen her yet, Veronica Herford, rather. So Cory, this question is for you. Take a minute to introduce yourself and why you're running for Janesville School Board.
Hi, so I'm Cory James. I am a longtime resident of Janesville. I was born and raised here, went to our school district. I have three kids, 12, 10, and five. Five-year-old's my daughter. There are two of our boys. So I want nothing but the best for those kids, and if I want the best for those kids, why do I not want the best for all of our kids? Number two, I'm a coach. So I coach a lot of our youth in sports, in baseball, in football, and those kids have battled for me, and this, to me, is going to be my battle back to them. Finally, I am a small business owner. I'm highly invested in this community, and I want to see our community strive. We need to get back to the top, and all good things will happen.
Thank you, Cory. Tyra Johnson, same question. Why? Introduce yourself and why you are running for Janesville School Board of Trustees.
My name is Tyra Johnson, and I'm running for Janesville School Board because I am a mother of eight children within the district. I've had three that have graduated already, and I have students at Parker, Franklin, and Wilson. I've been a very strong advocate for my children and other children within the district, and I would like to see our schools succeed so that our, the city of Janesville can succeed in its economy also. So I have previously served on the Head Start Parent Policy Council, so I have a little bit of school board experience, so.
Thank you. Colton Measner, why? Introduce yourself and why you are running for the Janesville School District Board of Trustees.
My name is Colton Measner. I'm a candidate for the Janesville School Board. Last year, you may recognize my name, I decided to run for school board last year, a year out of high school. And now, last year, you know, I did a lot of great things, and I came up just short, but that didn't stop me. I talked it over with my friends and family, who are huge influences in my candidacy for school board, and I said, you know, I really think I can do something good with this, so I decided to rerun this year. I have two brothers. One graduated from Janesville Craig last year, and I have one that's a junior at Janesville Craig, official year-round for youth-to-varsity-level sports. My dad is a small business owner, so I've gotten aspects with that, and my mom was in the special education field for a long time as well. So I just really have a knack for helping people and providing a fresh perspective for everybody.
Thank you, Colton. Julie Richardson, please take a minute to introduce yourself and tell us why you are running for the Janesville School District Board of Trustees.
Hi, my name is Julie Richardson. I'm running for the school board of Janesville because I believe that a strong community needs a strong school system. I am a mother of two School District of Janesville graduates recently. I am a longtime Janesville resident. My husband owns a small business here in town as well. I want to be an advocate for teachers and students in Janesville. I want to help improve the outcomes for all students in Janesville because every child deserves the best education they possibly can get. That is the way they're going to move forward and have the best opportunities available to them. I want to ensure accountability and transparency throughout the district for the budget, for the student outcomes, and for the safety of our students and staff.
Thank you, Julie. This next round of questions will begin with Cory James. Cory, academic performance continues to decline as measured by the State Department of Public Instruction Report Card. The Studer Education Group is being brought back to give guidance on accountability and academic performance. As a school board member, what is your direction to the Studer Group and to the district in that respect?
Well, I've actually just became familiar with the Studer, pardon me, the Studer Education, and I'm an advocate for it. I think that during my time in school, I graduated in 2002, we were at a top-tier school and for years to follow. After that, and then they got rid of the Studer Education, our scores declined. So now we know that we have a product that works. I think we should reinforce and get it back into the system.
Thank you, Cory. Tyra Johnson, academic performance continues to decline as measured by the State Department of Public Instruction Report Card. The Studer Education Group is being brought back to give guidance on accountability and academic performance. As a member of the school board, what would be your direction to the Studer Group and to the district in this respect?
That's a good question. I feel like that is a good, a good way that we need to go back because our test scores are not reflecting very well right now. So I feel like we need to increase those test scores so that our students are prepared for the future.
Okay, thank you. Colton Measner, same question. Academic performance continues to decline as measured by the State Department of Public Instruction Report Card. The Studer Education Group is being brought back to give guidance on accountability and academic performance. As a member of the school board, what would be your direction to the district and to the Studer Group?
First, our scores may be down, but that does not reflect who we are as a district. I feel that how our scores are presented to the public are the way they're going to be presented, but it's a snapshot of one day, and I don't feel that that is a big enough snapshot to see how good our students and staff are doing. We are making strides in a better direction now. We have great leadership, as we met with them earlier today, in fact. As for the Studer Project, you know, as Cory mentioned, after 2005, he came in, we started doing really good, really well. For some reason, that kind of just slipped away, and then we are now where we're at now, and I'm a strong advocate to bring that back.
Thank you. Julie Richardson, the same question.
I think that the things that the Studer Group can bring to the School District of Janesville are definitely a positive. They had seemed to have worked before, as we said, as people have said. However, I think I would, as a school board member, I would definitely direct them to work with teachers and administration and get teacher input, for sure, because teachers know these students best. They are the ones that are with these students eight hours a day, and they need to be able to tell them what our students are, what the needs of our students are. The other thing I would say to the trends here and the scores that we're having right now is that it's a national trend after COVID. We are having, we're seeing a national trend. Janesville's not alone in their test scores. So I think that, I think we're going to see improvement. I know there have been some curriculum changes made, and I would want the Studer Group to dive into those curriculum changes and how we can make better changes for everyone, for better scores.
Okay, thank you. Michelle Hayworth, the same question.
Thank you. Yes, the report card did reflect lower scores, lower scores than we would want again. However, I encourage you to watch last night's board meeting where we got the presentation on the mid-year update on the scores, and you will see positive trends almost among every grade level in math and reading. Attendance is up, involvement in youth apprenticeships is doubled. We are giving students a lot of opportunities, so that report card does not reflect, you know, what you might think it does, and it is going to be going up. We do, the trends that we saw last night are indicators of what we're going to see on the next report card update. The curriculum updates for, if you have children, you've got bridges for math. It is really engaging. I can tell you, like, I had a grade schooler at the time it was rolled out, and he came home just saying how engaging, he really loved it, and then he got to do different activities depending on what level you were at. Wonders has really proven well, if you look at the reading scores that we have too. So we also are, as Julie mentioned, we're not doing the worst. We're actually doing really quite well. Sheboygan District has a dashboard that you can see that we're high-ranked high on. And the last thing is, I would direct...
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
Studer to continue. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We'll continue with, I guess, a little bit longer, complicated questions at this stage, and we'll begin this with Tyra Johnson. Multiple studies show a correlation between reliance on computer-based pedagogy and the decline in basic math, reading, and problem-solving skills, particularly at the elementary level. Are we overrelying on technology, and what would be your policy guidance in that respect to the district?
So I feel like technology has taken over the world a little too much, in the sense for everybody's lives. I mean, technology is supposed to be good, but I think that maybe a more of a hands-on, a lot of kids, I think, learn hands-on with math. So I think that maybe we might need to change that a little bit and do more like a hands-on type program for the students.
Thank you, Tyra. Colton Measner, multiple studies show a correlation between reliance on computer-based pedagogy and the decline in basic math, reading, and problem-solving skills, particularly at the elementary school level. Are we overrelying on technology, and what would be your policy guidance to the district in this respect?
I wouldn't say we are overrelying on technology. In fact, technology has enhanced learning and learning spaces for our students. However, there's no shame in what some would say the old-fashioned way of whiteboard, chalkboard, and writing things down on a piece of paper. Me, as a student, that's what worked best for me. In fact, writing it down several times, that's the best way you're going to learn. Yes, technology is distracting, and if you have an eighth grader in a middle school classroom allowed to do things on his Chromebook during teaching, yeah, they're probably going to wander off to YouTube or something like that. However, that's why we have to guide the district to tread carefully with technology and what, how they use it. Thank you.
Thank you, Colton. Julie Richardson, same question. Multiple studies have shown a correlation between reliance on computer-based pedagogy and the decline in basic math, reading, and problem-solving skills, particularly at the elementary school level. Are we overrelying on technology, and what would be your policy guidance to the district?
I do think we have a little bit of too much tech in the classrooms occasionally. We will never keep up with technology. Technology is outpacing school districts. We're just, as a school district, we're never going to be able to keep up with what's the newest and greatest thing out there. We need to be learning, training critical thinkers, problem solvers, and we do that by giving them strong building blocks. So I would definitely be encouraging teachers to tell us what is working in the classroom with tech and what is not, and that would be my guidance and policy for them. Also, I would say, kind of like Colton said, books, back to the books, you know, reading, reading, reading. Nothing increases a child's literacy and vocabulary and comprehension skills like picking up a book and reading it. So books are, we're in the library. It's the best place in the world. So that, those are critical things that we need to be doing more of, and I would encourage that. I do also think that the no-phone policy at the high schools have been a dramatic improvement, and I think teachers and students alike are finding that those are, have been a positive change as far as technology is concerned. Thanks.
Thank you. Michelle, same question.
Yes, thank you. I agree with Julie. The high school change and no cellphone policy has been successful. We've already had it at middle school very successfully. I was, actually, I don't believe that we have a technology, you know, too much technology issue in our district, because actually, even just today, my youngest was telling me that during flex, they were going to be reading some books, and then they went up to the whiteboard and they played their reading game, a word game that they all enjoy. So we're not, we're using it in a good way. We're not, they're not just sitting on their phones, they're not just sitting on their Chromebooks. They are engaging in technology in good ways. And I also know that the Bridges curriculum for math that we have has different facets of it. Yes, some of it might be on the Chromebook, but then others of it is you're in the corner with some blocks or different things. There's different, different learning strategies that we've implemented. I honestly don't believe that it's a problem in our district.
Thank you. Cory James, same question.
Well, being honest, sometimes I still pull out my phone to calculate a tip when I'm at a restaurant. I do think it is an issue, but I do think there's great things with it. Like I said, I've definitely lost some brain cells that I used to have. Long division is hard, but it's a lot easier to pull out your phone. I do think that there's a lot of great things with technology, though. For instance, some of the Chromebooks and the activities that they have for reading, I wish I was a part of that. So I do think there is a place for it, but I do think it also needs to be watched.
Thank you. This next round of questions will begin with Colton. Colton, we have 985 fewer students than we did in 2016, '17 school year, eight years ago. Teaching staff has been reduced by 28.4 positions. We've added a total of 21.3 non-teaching positions, and almost all of them are either administrators or administrative support. Does that make sense from your perspective?
That's a long question. As far as student enrollment, it is down. I believe there are certain reasons to that, and in all likelihood, you could point it to one of, everyone just sees the negative about our district more than they see the positive, and that's part of our problem is we have to, even though our report card reflects something, we have to start showing all the positive things as well, and people got to see all the positive things we are doing. As far as hiring staff goes, we have to hire what we need. Part of the reason we can't keep on staff is because of budget reasons, and right now, funding is a big problem, and a budget is a big problem when we don't have what we need. And administrative staff, I am looking, you know, I have been looking at that, and it is a little frustrating. However, I'm sure that, you know, they're all doing good things. I would just like to have better examples of what they're doing and what they are supposed to be doing.
Thank you. Julie Richardson, same question. We've got 985 fewer students than we had eight years ago. Teaching staff's been reduced by over 28 positions, and we've added a total of 21 non-teaching positions, almost all of them either administrators or administrative support. Does that make sense to you?
We are one of the largest districts in the state, so given that fact, I believe that an administrative, a strong administration is critical to a functioning, high-functioning school district. However, I would possibly like to see those administrators be a little more hands-on in the classroom. If that's where we need them, to get our scores where we need to be, then maybe that's what we need to do, is take a couple of hours every day that all those administrators need to make time in their week to get into a classroom. As we discussed, lower enrollment numbers from 10, eight to 10 years ago means less money in the district. We are, so therefore, less money means less revenue, less, less staff, which is a problem. But I do think there are some solutions we could come up with while keeping a strong administration and also getting the input, the teaching staff that we need in the classrooms as well.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, same question. We've got many fewer students than we did eight years ago. Teaching staff has been reduced. We've added many administrators and administrative support positions. Does that make sense to you?
Well, yes, birth rates have been declining nationwide. That's not just a Janesville local issue. Our staff is down. We do have a TPR to follow, and the support staff isn't, I think you might need to dig into that and what they are. There are a lot more, some more student service support that we're adding. The referendum is going to help with that. The operational referendum is going to help with more student services, student support. We do need more of that, I can tell you that, and that, but yeah, we're just keeping within the TPR. I don't, we're not, we're not alone in this issue of declining enrollment, and therefore, it is staff-driven because, like Julie said, it's a really three-year average of, that's how we're funded, and when that money goes down, we have to make decisions and be fiscally responsible, but make sure we have the support we need for the students.
Thank you. Cory, same question.
I'm a big fan of trying to do less with more, and that's what I feel like we're doing currently, and that's not actually what I'm trying to send the message across with. We need to be, let me try to reword this here. I had all this time to think about it, and I had it perfect in my head until we have to spit it out. But it's best to do more with less than it is to do less with more. Currently, the way that I feel is we are doing less with more. So say what you will about the DPI report cards, they, our education is down according to them, and our faculty, everything else is up, and that stuff does cost money. So these are things that I think that we need to address and find out, you know, what can we cut? What can we do better on and try to be most efficient as possible?
Thank you, Cory. Tyra Johnson, same question. We've got fewer students than we did eight years ago. Teaching staff has been reduced by over 28 positions. We've added 21.3 non-teaching positions, almost all of them either administrators or administrative support. Does that make sense?
So I feel like the decline in population, people just aren't having kids like they used to. So that, that takes a part in that decline in students. And the support staff, I feel like there is quite a few kids in the district that need that extra support with being able to learn, and those administrators, I assume, are assisting with those students. And I feel that maybe we can cut maybe a little bit with some of those, maybe, that they aren't needed so much, so.
Thank you. I would remind folks, you have the opportunity to present questions that I'll try and mix into the conversation. So if you didn't grab a card, Paul is making the rounds. He'll hand out cards and pens. We'd love to have your questions so that you have an opportunity to directly participate. We'll make sure that we reserve some time for them, but the sooner you get them to me, the less you have to listen to my questions. Let's start this next round with Julie Richardson. Julie, as budgets become tighter, how do you propose to deal with extracurricular activities such as sports and the fine arts? Where do they fit on your priority list?
Sports and fine arts and other extracurricular activities are critical to student learning and engagement. I think that they are a high priority and a high value of mine. Most students will talk about their high school or their middle school years, and a lot of their experiences will revolve, their positive experiences revolve around the extracurriculars. We're seeing a higher level of need in our students here in Janesville over the last eight years, I think, is safe to say, and I think therefore, extracurriculars in sports become even more critical. By keeping them, allowing them to stay at school longer, in a safe environment, in a, in a secure place that we know they're cared for, with someone who's keeping a good eye on them, and giving them a great experience is, is critical, in my opinion. I judged the DECA competition yesterday in Lake Geneva, and it was a great experience to watch a kid bloom in thirty minutes with a question was really amazing. So I think those are great opportunities for our students.
Thank you, Julie. Michelle Hayworth, same question. As budgets become tighter, how do you propose to deal with extracurricular activities such as sports and the fine arts? Where do they fit on your priority list?
They're a high priority of mine. I have, my middle one was a huge basketball player freshman year, then he went on to be a big golf player. But anyway, when, during COVID, when we had to make the decision whether or not we were going to let the kids play basketball, when I got home from that meeting, the joy that he had, that he got to go back, even if it was masked, that he got to play basketball, was that we made the decision as a board to let them continue. It was huge. Some kids need a stage, some kids need a basketball court, and some volleyball court, whatever it is, it's critical to me. So that, that night, I will never forget, and how important it is to the students. So we will make it happen. We, we will always figure out the funding. It is, it is a high priority of mine, and I will not let those outlets, because to Julie's point, those are lifelong lessons, lifelong friends that they're going to have and they're going to talk about forever.
Thank you, Michelle. Cory James, same question. As budgets become tighter, how do you propose to deal with extracurricular activities such as sports and the fine arts? How do they fit into your priority list?
I would say they're very high near the top, if not the top, besides the education of our kids. But what happens with sports? We know for a fact that student athletes have higher GPAs than non-student athletes. We know in the working field that sports actually does create employable adults, and that's what we're all trying to do, get them out of the house, right? It builds bonds. It builds bonds, and they become very social with each other. They hold each other accountable. So my number-one thing that I'm kind of running on my campaign is accountability and winning, getting back to winning. Accountability is, is huge. These kids are able to be spoken to that are student athletes, and they just, they become great adults, and I think it is a very high priority of mine to keep that on the list.
Thank you. Tyra Johnson, same question. Budgets are becoming tighter. How do you propose to deal with extracurricular activities such as sports and the fine arts? Where do they fit in your priority list?
Sports and fine arts fits pretty high there. All of my students are athletes. My son is track, football, basketball, so, and my other younger ones are football and basketball also. So it does build teamwork, which is something that they will need once they get into the workforce. It builds that relationship with their peers, and I feel that it's a good thing for them. As Michelle said, you know, it, some kids do need the, the stage, they'll need the stands, and it builds confidence when they have their peers out there and parents and teachers cheering them on, which will also help them with their education, I believe, once they have that ego boost.
Thank you. Colton Measner, as budgets become tighter, how do you propose to deal with extracurricular activities such as sports and the fine arts? Where do they fit in your priority list?
First, even with budgets being tight, we will make it work. We always have. We have tremendous opportunity in this district, and I want to continue to be able to provide that. Sports do hold students accountable, though. They need to have a high enough GPA in order to play. So I like that, and one thing is, is you never know what's going on in a student's life, and sometimes going to basketball practice or playing in a game is just what they may need, to just keep going, keep coming to school, and holding themselves together. The one thing I will say about the arts... The one thing I will say about the arts and the sports and all that is, I wish everyone would care this much about education as they do about athletics. Because if we had everybody that cares this much about athletics, that cared that much about education, I guarantee you, we'd see a difference right now. And we, we are preparing the next generation. So athletics isn't the end-all, be-all, but it will develop them.
Thank you, Colton. This is an audience question. Apart from various tests for students and evaluations for administration, Michelle, how would you support teachers and paraprofessionals to ensure students receive the level and intensity of instruction needed to improve scores?
Our district is already doing a lot of work, weekly and monthly, sitting together with professional learning teams to academic learning teams to talk about what's going good and what, in their districts, and what they can be, maybe sharing best practices is what I'm trying to say. And actually, I visit a school a month, and I have for two years with another commissioner. We visit different, we've visited almost all of them, I think now, a couple of them twice even. And when we're there, we talk to the principal. They take us around their building. They tell us kind of some of their pain points, what's going well. And one of the things that I took away, we went to Jackson two weeks ago. And Sarah, the principal there, mentioned that in fifth grade, there's two teachers. And one focuses on social studies and math, and the other one does English and another subject. And that's really worked well because those teachers have been able to really specialize, be consistent. And that practice now is being kind of shared to other elementaries because they're seeing student growth in there because the teacher's becoming more proficient. So best, sharing best practices.
Thank you.
That minute goes fast.
Corey, same question. As apart from various tests for students and evaluations for administration, how would you support teachers and paraprofessionals to ensure students receive the level and intensity of instruction needed to improve scores?
I think the teachers in these challenging situations need to be appreciated 100%. They have a challenging job. I'm a electrician during the day, commercial electrician, IBW. I could be hammered with a thousand volts of electricity every day. I wouldn't change jobs with these guys any, any day. They definitely need more appreciation to show that the stuff that they're doing is working and that us as a community are grateful for them.
Thank you. Tyra Johnson, same question. Apart from various tests for students and evaluations for administration, how would you support teachers and paraprofessionals to ensure students receive the level and intensity of instruction needed to improve scores?
I definitely applaud teachers because they deal with multiple personalities throughout the day, eight hours a day. Essentially, teachers are spending more time than we are with our children. And they, they need to be rewarded for that and appreciated. And I can't, I, it's hard even for me to deal with just eight. I couldn't imagine dealing with 15, 20 kids in one class at one time. So I feel like if teachers and paraprofessionals get appreciated from other people, the community, principals, administration, and also parents, parents need to be held accountable also in these situations.
Thank you. Colton Measner, same question. Apart from various tests for students and evaluations for administration, how would you support teachers and paraprofessionals to ensure students receive the level and intensity of instruction needed to improve the scores?
First, I'd advocate for more involvement from our administration in our district all around the buildings and our boards. Because that way you can see what they're actually doing and what they're prioritizing. The teachers do need to be supported more. They, they need to feel comfortable with whatever decision they need to make, whether that's disciplinary action or anything else of that matter. They need to feel supported by administration within the building. And going on the teacher appreciation thing, I could list things. But when I hear people complain about them having time off or whatever it may be, it's not really fair because what they have to do and what they go through is beyond words. And it, it's a tough job. I'm a ref, and I wouldn't even change that. I wouldn't. So, and, and more parental involvement would be really helpful because that, that's, that's where one of our bigger problems is.
Thank you, Colton. Julie Richardson, same question.
I don't know if anyone else in the room remembers back in COVID when we were educating our kids at home. And everybody thought teachers were the best thing ever because they are. Because it's a hard, hard job. So I would like to see principals, administrators be more of a support, be, be the support and give teachers the flexibility and the ability to do their jobs in the classroom. Again, teachers know their students best. And I would like to know, the teachers want to, need to know that their principal and their administration and their school board has their back and that they, and has their safety, security, and best interests at the center of their decision-making. And by doing that, we show appreciation for the teachers by doing that that way. A lot of, if I had a magic wand and money was no object, I would have, every teacher would have as many paras, as many aides as she'd like and he or she would like in the classroom. That is obviously not the reality we live in unfortunately right now. But smaller class sizes and a higher student-to-teacher ratio would be something that I would definitely love to give every teacher. And that's, I think, the best way we could show them appreciation is by working toward those goals.
Thank you. And you mentioned magic wands, another question from the audience. And we'll begin this with Corey James. If you could change just one thing in the district, what would it be?
If I could change one thing, I would have to say transparency. So for me, I try to do my research, try to find out what have we voted on? Where are we actually standing at? How much staff do we actually have? These are all challenging for me. They may be out there. But it shouldn't be as challenging to find the answers that we're looking for, for being part of this community. The answer is that a lot of us want to know. And what happens is, now, we start actually conversing amongst each other. Then all of a sudden, the facts are getting diluted. And we don't know what's, what's actually going on. For instance, you know, DPI, 14th from the bottom. That's, that's absolute garbage. But then you come to find out, okay, all right, well, we're actually pretty good in our education, you know, and they base it off to other things. While general community is looking at, to our peers, we're scraping the bottom of the barrel.
Thank you, Corey. Tyra Johnson, if you could change just one thing, what would it be?
I feel like we would need to change the, the accountability. I think everybody needs to be held accountable throughout the district. That's coming from parents, students, some teachers, you know, custodians, all the way, I mean, everybody that's involved in the children. I think it's the accountability is the main thing.
Thank you. Colton Measner, if you could change just one thing, what would it be?
I would go back to, one of my answers would be involvement. When I say that, I mean involvement from our community and families. The lack of that is really one of our biggest problems. And that, that is what we need. You look at other districts and they have that involvement. And we can't just have a board of nine of us make a decision, and then after the fact, that's when everyone wants to get involved and say that was a bad move or a bad decision. Because we would have liked that input prior to that vote. And we, the district wants your input and your involvement because you're their parents. You know what's best for them. And they'll always take that into consideration.
Thank you, Colton. Julie Richardson, same question.
If I had a magic wand, I would fix the budget. I would have unlimited funds because I could feed every child in the district breakfast and lunch and send them home with a sack lunch or sack dinner. I could build the best soccer stadium. I could build you a lacrosse field. I could pay every teacher 10 times their value and make sure that they had amazing health insurance. I could, I could fix it all. Because money doesn't, isn't the solution to everything, but it sure makes everything a whole lot easier. So if I had a magic wand, I would do that. And one of the ways that I think we can all do that is by holding the state more accountable for our, the resources that they're holding from us. This, the district is, they're not keeping up with the rate of inflation. And it costs more to educate our students now than it did 10 years ago. We're missing thousands of dollars per student based on the state funding that we should be getting. So that's money, budget.
Thank you. Michelle, if you could change just one thing, what would it be?
I was going to say funding, but Julie took my answer. So I'm going to say student need. It breaks my heart when I see the huge need in our district that some students have that we don't even have a lot of visibility to. There are homeless, there are people, students where his home is not safe, and that breaks my heart. So since she took funding, which is obviously the biggest one I would want to wave my wand at, I will say the student socioeconomic statuses. I would love to see us have every kid safe and fed and well mentally.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
This next round of questions, we'll begin with Tyra Johnson. Tyra, how do you feel about the school choice program? And should tuition dollars follow the student or stay within the control of the individual school district?
School choice, I'm not too familiar with how that funding works. But I feel that school choice is something that is a good program. So that kids can feel that they can choose the school that they want to go to because they feel more comfortable at that school. If you're not comfortable where you're at, it, 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 it it messes with the kid's education, I feel. So. I'm sorry, I wasn't too prepared for that question.
Thank you, Tyra. Colton Measner, how do you feel about the school choice program? And should tuition dollars follow the student or stay within the control of the individual school district?
I think the program is great. I want to look into it more as I'm not 100% familiar with it. I have a lot to learn. But, you know, I, I want to look into it. But from what I see on the outside of things and just briefly looking at it, I really like what it does. As far as tuition dollars, for me, I'm kind of torn in both directions. But I think the district, if the student is in the district, the district should have more say than the student does. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Richardson, same question. How do you feel about the school choice program? And should tuition dollars follow the student or stay within the control of the individual school district?
School vouchers, the school voucher system steals from public schools and steals from public education. We cannot function if we are sending dollars outside of our district. If you want to choose between Parker and Craig, I have no problem with that. But taking dollars that belong in our district, they need to stay with the district, with, not with the student. If a parent chooses to send their child to a private school, that is their choice. But that is not, should not be taking the opportunities in education away from children that are in the district.
Thank you. Michelle, how do you feel about the school choice program? And should tuition dollars follow the student or stay within the control of the individual school district?
I do believe that the money should follow the student because each family and each student has different needs. So you have to make the decision that's best for your family and your, and your student. You know, whether it's a charter, whether that's private for your family values, whether, maybe it's a, you know, it's online, it's a, it's a, something like, something like that. But I think SDJ should be the destination district. So I don't, I don't know that we should be concerned. We should make sure that our district is the destination that everybody wants to send their kids to. That's right. Mine too. I never went to private because they are getting a solid education. And I was a very engaged parent too. I mean, if parents are engaged, then you can make that happen. So I, I do believe, yes, the money should follow the student, but it should follow them to SDJ because we should be the destination district that people want to send their kids to.
Thank you. Thank you. Corey James, same question. How do you feel about the school choice program? And should tuition dollars follow the student or stay within the control of the individual school district?
I think that's kind of a hot topic issue to a lot of people. I actually heard one the other day about a gentleman saying, "I've never had kids. Why is my tax dollars going towards the school district?" Well, it's an argument I haven't heard, but I, I understand what you're saying. So where I'm at is in business, in the trades, in sports, we have competitors. There's, there's no way around it. So instead of looking at, well, where should that money go? Should the money go here? No, I'm kind of with Michelle a little bit here where we need to get to the top. Don't give them an option. In business, you know, that's what we try to do. You know, we have competitors that we want to kind of push off to the side. You're going to come here, you know, in the trades. I have to quote against multiple contractors on multiple jobs, and I don't always win. But we try to get the best product that we can so that we can get to the top and we actually start getting those wins. Sports, same thing. You know, we have competitors everywhere we're at.
Thank you. This next round of questions, we'll begin with Colton Measner. Colton, do you see your board role for effective governance as an innovator, a manager, an observer, a change agent, or something else? And more importantly, tell me why.
I would, I would say the answer to that question would be the first option you gave me, which would be an innovator. However, today we had a meeting with our directors of the school district. And Mark Holsman pointed out himself, our one employee is him. And so I don't like to say manage. I don't like to manage people. I want to let people do their jobs and step in when necessary. And that's part of why I want to start listening to our teachers more because then we don't have to manage, because then we're all making one decision that's best for everybody. So I would say innovating would be my answer to that.
Thank you, Colton. Julie Richardson, do you see your board role for effective governance as an innovator, a manager, observer, change agent, or something else? And more importantly, why?
I've, I would say I'm more of a guide would be what I would chose to, to be. I am an avid listener and a learner. I have been on a number of nonprofit boards where we've had some very interesting debates, very many different views. And I am the type of person that will take everybody's issues into account and concerns. And we will try to come up with a compromise that is the most, has the best solution for everyone. And I think that we're going to have to do a lot of that with the school board, with the budget constraints we've talked about and a lot of other things that will always come up. So I envision, envision myself as, as a guide and as someone that can, you can come to and bounce ideas off of. And we will, we will collaborate, and then we will come up with the best solution together. And that's how I would hope to be as a school board member.
Thank you. Michelle Hayworth, do you see your board role for effective governance as an innovator, manager, observer, change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why?
I would say a thoughtful contributor because I want to be mindful of taking in all the inputs and learning as much as I can about each issue that we have to make a decision about before I make a decision. There, that's why we started doing, Liz, Paul and I, Commissioner Paul and I do a school visit a month is when we were going to start to have to close down Tagos, making that decision. We felt like we couldn't make that decision without being there, actually experiencing it, talking to the staff, talking to the students, and seeing what it was all about. So I'm going to, I can, I tell you, I'm going to be thoughtful and I'm going to be getting, you know, getting in there, involving, you know, taking input from the JEA because they're a big voice of the teachers and the staff. So, but then also leading, you know, with my business background, I can help do the superintendents, I have for the last three superintendents helped form their I have for the last three superintendents helped form their goals and their assessments, their assessments, sorry about that. So, yeah, thoughtful contributor where I'm going to take in all the inputs, but then also a leader where I can help guide his assessments.
Thank you, Michelle. Cory James, do you see your role for effective governance as an innovator, a manager, an observer, maybe a change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why?
Well, I can tell you what I'm not is I'm not a politician and I'm not a very good public speaker. I fumble over my words, and that's not what you guys are looking for. I think what you guys are looking for is an action taker, a doer. And that is something that I am. I take risks, I take gambles, and I see them through. Because we cannot go by the wayside. You get analysis paralysis. You know, if we're not taking action on a lot of great ideas that people bring to the table, if nothing changes, nothing changes. So, I definitely want to be the action taker, the doer on the board.
Thank you, Cory. Tara Johnson, same question. Do you see your role for effective governance as an innovator, a manager, an observer, a change agent, or something else? And most importantly, why?
I see myself as definitely not a man, I mean, I manage in my daytime job, but I don't want to micromanage. That's something that I don't do. As long as you're doing your job properly, I'm okay with it. And I feel like we need to listen and take into account everybody's ideas to make the district better and to help foster our kids' learning. And, sorry, I have to look at my notes here. Yeah, so just innovative, an innovator, I think.
Okay. Thank you. This next round of questions, we'll begin with Julie Richardson. Julie, federal and state funding may be changing in the very near future. How does this affect your role to react and ensure that services that you're overseeing are addressed and delivered seamlessly?
Budgets are always difficult. They're always a challenge. And I have some concerns about what we might be facing in the near future. And I think working as a team and as a group that can evaluate what we have to work with and what our needs are and how we're going to get to the goal line, which is educating as many, all the children of Janesville the best we can with limited funding is going to be a challenge. But it's a job we have to, will have to do. Hopefully, we won't get there. Hopefully, we will get some funding from the state and the federal government back at the rates we need it. Otherwise, we will have to revisit referendums. And that's things we've been doing in the past. And we will have to continue to look at those things, unfortunately.
Thank you, Julie. Michelle Hayworth, same question. Federal and state funding may be changing in the near future. How does this affect your role to react and ensure that services that you're overseeing are addressed and delivered seamlessly?
I think it's pretty early. We don't know what we don't know yet. But I would rely on the administrative staff to let us know what their impacts they're seeing. And then we can address them then, like Julie said, hopefully not through a referendum, but we have had to do that. But, you know, potentially at the federal level, if that's disbanded, that would send more to the states, which would get more to us. That is our biggest revenue stream is state funding. So, I think we just have to wait and see and react as best we can based on the administration's recommendation as far as what the impacts could be.
Thank you. Cory James, same question. Federal state funding may be changing in the near future. How does this affect your role to react and ensure that services you're overseeing are addressed and delivered seamlessly?
So, the key word is maybe. It may be happening, and it quite possibly will. We may get hit with a meteor, according to local media at the moment. You know, it's 3% chance in 2038. That's another thing we're going to have to address if that were to happen in our area. But we're going to have a plan. So, we're going to have a plan. We're going to keep it in the back of their minds. But we have to address our current situation and what we get for funding. And the best part is, is if something were to happen in the next few years, we're not going alone. It's not going to just affect us. There's going to be other communities that we can reach out to, be like, hey, how are you guys solving this? You know, I'm not a too shameful person. Like, I have no problem going to another community that is doing well and asking them, hey, what are you guys doing that makes it work? Because we would like to incorporate your same tactics so that we can get back to the top.
Thank you. Tara Johnson, same question. Federal and state funding may be changing in the near future. How does this affect your role to react and ensure that the services you are overseeing are addressed and delivered seamlessly?
So, with the funding, I feel like we need to have a backup plan. There always should be a Plan B in everything that you do and have. So, there should be some type of way that we're able to maybe compensate some of that funding that we're losing. If it's, you know, going back to doing more referendums to help foster the needs of the schools, that's something that we're going to have to do as a community, I feel like.
Thank you, Tara. Colton Meesner, same question.
First, I'd say it's, it has not happened yet, but it's very concerning as to what could. My biggest frustration would be is that those making that type of decision don't quite understand how big of an impact that's going to have. And that's pretty frustrating because how do we answer to the people that are very concerned about it if we don't know either? And the people, again, the people that are making those decisions don't seem to quite understand the impact it's going to have on our district if all of that funding goes away. And we ask why we need to go to a referendum. This is why. We don't have the funding that we need. And this is why we need to go to a referendum. I don't like it, but we need to just to keep the lights on and not have to make cuts. We'll always make it work. Just be patient, be positive. We'll get through it.
Okay. Thank you. And the final question of the evening. We'll start with you, Michelle. Why should the voters elect or hire you to be on the Janesville School Board?
All right. Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. This means a lot, seeing a lot of familiar faces that I haven't seen for a while. And you took time out of your night to participate in this. I want you to know that I'm always going to be very involved. I'm an active and engaged parent. I visit the schools monthly. I listen to the staff. I will always do that. I want our district to be a destination district where businesses want to come, parents want to send their kids, and the kids have the best learning environment that they can. I want to thank the Forward Janesville for their support, especially with the Suter, the Forward Janesville Foundation for the support of Suter. I want to thank our talented staff and directors. We've got a great team of administrators leading this district, you guys. And they work tirelessly and they do such a good job. I'm so thankful for the student opportunities that we have in this district, whether it's Global Business Academy, youth apprenticeship. Our kids get exposure to a lot of things that get them ready for after school. So, please be proud of the district that we are in and we're representing because I really am. And parents, please be engaged with your kids' learning. It starts at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Cory James, why should the voters elect or hire you to be on the Janesville School Board?
I put a lot of weight into accountability. And this is accountability for all, from our school board to our superintendent, to our administrators, to our teachers, to our kids, and to our parents. Everybody needs to be held accountable if we're going to get back to the top. It's a team sport. Like I said before, I'm a father. I want nothing but the best for my kids. I want nothing but the best for the kids that I've coached, the kids that I see in my laundromats, the kids that I see, you know, just outside here in the children's library. You know, these kids want to learn. They want to get to the top. And I'm going to be the one that's going to drive to get us to the top, get back to winning.
Thank you. Tara Johnson, why should the voters elect or hire you to be a member of the Janesville Board of Education?
So, I am, like I stated, I am a mother to eight children. That's a lot of kids in this district that are children that have graduated and children that have been through multiple schools. As far as, I had my daughter attended Rock University. My two sons graduated from, my one son graduated from Rock River Charter. And then I just had a son who recently graduated from Parker High School last year. And so, just being an advocate for the kids in the district and being involved. I'm a very involved mother with my children, with other children in the district. And I listen. I listen to the students. I listen to the custodians. I listen to the teachers. I listen to the teachers and parents and their concerns. And I'm willing to bring that to the board.
Thank you. Colton Meesner, why should the voters elect or hire you to be a member of the Janesville School District Board of Trustees?
First, thanks for putting this on. You guys, it's good. I like seeing all the familiar faces, especially my two brothers in the back. You know, those two over there and some other faces in this room have been big influences in my campaign. They've support me, and without them, I wouldn't be sitting here. So, I graduated two years ago. My perspective on the district is as clear and as fresh as it can get. And I think that's what our board needs. I want to continue to support our students and staff. They go through difficult times, may just have a long day. I want to be there for them. And any decision we make as a board or a district, students and staff are what's best for them. And, you know, I want to continue to contribute to the city, the district. I've been involved. And more importantly, I want to give back to the district because without the district, I wouldn't be here, and I wouldn't have the knowledge I have. I hope to have your vote on April 1st. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Richardson, why should the voters elect or hire you to be a member of the Janesville School District Board of Trustees?
If I'm elected, I would, will support teachers, administrators, and students to make it the best place to work and be educated as possible. I will appreciate what is working and support, continue to support those programs. I will collaborate in the areas that we need change and to look for new ideas and resolutions. The school board has a responsibility and role to educate all the children of the district by making education safe, accessible, and of the highest quality. Each child needs the opportunity to reach their highest potential. And a quality education gives children, in even the most difficult circumstances, that option and opportunity to thrive. If given the opportunity to serve on the school board, I will make that my priority.
Thank you. That concludes this evening's forum. I would remind folks that the candidates will be around after we break up here for any opportunity for you to interact with him one-on-one. I thank you for joining us tonight. I thank the audience for demonstrating the interest and the desire to get to know the candidates. Probably the most important right that we have is actually a privilege that we need to recognize. And that's the right to vote on the issues that matter most to us. And frankly, most of those issues are right here at home. I challenge everybody in the audience to get acquainted with the candidates. More importantly, get to know where they stand on the issues. And then exercise that right that you have and vote on April 1st. The best community that we can have and the best school district that we will have is in part based upon your interest and your support. So, I offer this challenge to close the evening. Get informed, get involved, and believe me, you will be the change that you want to make. Thank you so very much. Thank you, candidates.